There we go. We got her now. I think. What'd you do? Hit that with a hammer?
Okay, we're gonna call to order the Monday, August 16th, 2021 Franklin Regional Board of School Directors to order. Uh, we were in executive session from 6:30 to 7:37 for legal, safety and security and contractual. And we're gonna rise for salute the flag.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, reading of the mission statement. We, the Franklin Regional School Community strive for excellence, learning, achievement and citizenship in all we do. Roll call, Ms. Wages.
Mrs. Woolen.
Present.
Mr. Scheiner.
Present.
Mr. Mitterator.
Present.
Mr. Kozlowski.
Here.
Mr. Nevin.
Here.
Mrs. Tower.
Here.
Mr. Weinman.
Here.
Mr. Yant.
Yes.
Mr. Yang.
Here. Thank you. Okay, superintendent's report, Dr. Pirano.
I'm going to have Nancy Gorgas provide us with an update on the primary and intermediate buildings.
Welcome, Nancy.
Starting with the primary, please. They're just trying to pull it up. There we go.
Oh, there we go.
All right, so starting with the primary school. You could just scroll down to the next one. Um, so we're wrapping up. Um, we're really just cleaning up and getting ourselves out of the area, but this is the Area A restrooms, um, which is the restroom closest to the cafeteria. Uh, but it might be easier if you want to do that on the side there. Um, faculty lounge, um, that room is completed. I, this time I wanted to see, you can see the little corridor that we created for the restrooms. It's off, if you went past that refrigerator that's on the right, that's where that corridor is, on that other side of the wall. Cafeteria. We have all the finishes complete. We do have some issues with some ceiling tile. Um, what Glancy was able to do is use some of the tile that we had left over that was existing, that we have in place until the tile that's backordered comes in for us to do. So, you can tell it's actually, uh, we're right under where that ladder is. So the ceiling looks finished, it's just we don't have the new tile. So we'll have that in as soon as they get that tile in for us. And I just want to show, this is looking at the kitchen, um, the new tile and signage for the entrance. Kitchen. Just a number of slides there where you've got everything started up and we had the hood insul, inspection last week and we have the final inspection with the health department this week.
Good.
Just keep. That's the serving line. And then the rest area, in the Area C, um, is finalized as well. Accessories and partitions. Tiles all complete and all the fixtures are done. Glancy is working on the playground sidewalks. You can see they have a little more concrete work to finish up there. Um, and they're starting to prep for the playground surfacing, but unfortunately, the weather is not cooperating with us this week, um, with getting any of that work done. So we're gonna stay on top of the weather and hopefully we can get that, um, finished up so we can get the surfacing done there as soon as the, um, intermediate school is completed. Just looking a different direction. As always, I have the pay apps and the change order summaries. These are the same as what was presented, um, two weeks ago. The only change for the change order list is Dr. Pirano requested that we remove the two deduct change orders. So you'll see a change in the change order list based on that. And that's really on this, the last page for this one. Otherwise, we are wrapping up. Like I said, we have our final inspections this week. And we're just cleaning up and getting out of the district's way. So we're ready for students on the month, on the 23rd. And we can move over to the intermediate. Any questions about the primary school before we move on? So, um, far as the intermediate school, we are wrapping up the kitchen. Similarly, we've already had the hood inspected. And, uh, we have, uh, demonstrations hopefully starting this week as well as our inspections. Our health inspection is scheduled for the 18th. This is our serving line. Cafeteria. Faculty dining room. Some of the furniture's been, um, delivered and, and it's, um, set up. Our gymnasium, on Sunday, they finished the painting of the lines. Area, this is the stage. Um, they've got the curtains in and, uh, the, the district's been able to get in there and wax the floors. I wanted to include this. The partition walls are complete and this is that corridor that those partition walls create. So that if you have something going on in the creativity center, as well as something in the stage, the students will still be able to, using these partition walls, accessing the music hallways and classrooms. Creativity Center. And I have two different views of that. So you can see looking into the stage. Music corridor. Most of the, they, they finished up the casework. We have two new, uh, the four pieces of casework that came in late last week that they are finalizing the install, but everything is in, um, in the corridor now. This is the music classroom. This is the larger of the two. This has the, they put the partition wall into this morning, um, so that they can separate that room into two rooms. So one side is for the orchestra and one side is for the band. And then this is the choral or general music classroom. The creative arts room. Community room. This is off of the vestibule, um, but also between the vestibule and the creativity center. This is the ground floor lobby. So this is where the students that are dropped off at the, um, by the, that ride on the bus would come in. And this is also the floor for the third grade. And this is under the monumental stairs. They've got the furniture in as well now. This is the first floor vestibule. So looking to the right is the main office. And they installed that, uh, walk off, um, the carpeting in there today. We kind of postponed that just to, we had lots of deliveries, so we wanted to make sure we put that in last. This is the first floor lobby. The nurses' area, they're getting their, their spaces set up, so they're emptying boxes and whatnot. And the admin area, workroom. And the reception area. So this is, if you're walking in the front door, the front vestibule, this is right to the left. Principal's office. And the conference room. Second floor corridor. So this is actually looking towards the monumental stairs, um, with the lot, media center library on the left. And all of the bookcases were delivered last week and the librarians are furiously working to get that library set up. It's looking beautiful. Um, this is the workroom on the second floor. And then the conference room next door. And then our classrooms. And a lot of the teachers have their rooms beautifully set up. This is the ground floor. Ground floor corridor. So these are the areas, the breakout areas and the corridors. They've set up some of the furniture. Um, innovation center. And the stream classroom. And then first floor. Corridor and first floor, again with the furniture and the breakout areas. This is our stream classroom on the first floor. And the innovation center. You can see to the right, this is the garage door, the glass panels on the right-hand side. That's separated, that was installed today, um, that separates the stream classroom from the innovation center. But it also can be opened up to have a larger space for people. Second floor classroom. And corridor similarly with the furniture in the breakout areas. Art room. This also has one of those doors that separates it from the innovation center. And that's on the next slide. And then the playground equipment is installed and there have all, the next slide shows, we have all the material for the surfacing. We're just hoping to have some decent weather to get that finished. We had hoped to start today, but unfortunately with the weather, it's not possible. Again, we always have the payout summaries as well as the change order summaries. Again, this one per Dr. Pirano's request, uh, we removed the, um, deduct change order for the playground surfacing for advanced. And as far as the summary, just for this project, um, we are, we have a few things that we are, you know, we're waiting on. And that is, we have one partition wall that's, um, that is delayed. That's for the divisible, uh, uh, conference room. Everything else is on site and they'll be working again tomorrow to finish those up. As we've talked about before, the telescoping seating and bleachers, we don't have a delivery date on that as yet. Um, but we do have some outdoor, um, items that we're still working on as well. And then our final inspections are all this week. Any questions regarding the intermediate school? Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you for the tour on Wednesday, by the way. Or Saturday.
You're welcome.
Dr. Pirano?
That concludes the superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you. Okay, I need approval for the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting for August 2nd, 2021. And the special voting meeting for August 2nd, 2021.
Approved.
Move Scheiner.
Second.
Second. Admitterator. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Future dates, Dr. Pirano, on upcoming topics.
Future dates, September 13th, we will have the committee of the whole meeting at 7:30 PM here in, in the municipal building. And on September 20th, 2021, we will have our regular meeting here in, in the municipal building at 7:30 PM. Upcoming topics include personnel. Special education contracts, IDEA Part B and Section 619 agreements, gifts, grants and donations, permission to advertise for joint purchasing and authorization of joint purchasing representatives. And that concludes reports and information and upcoming topics.
Thank you, Dr. Pirano. Okay, list of bills for August 2021. I'll read the bills. Paid bills, general fund of $574,580.67. Capital reserve fund of $1,949.99. Athletic fund of $51.80. For total paid bills of $576,582.46. Unpaid bills, general fund of $476,056.81. Technology fund of $18,673. Capital reserve fund of $418,466. Athletic fund, $5,849.56. Construction fund of $1,790,588.96. For total unpaid bills of $2,709,604.33. For grand total of $3,286,186.79. Food service of $32,540.46. For grand total, including food service, of $3,318,727.25. Need a motion for a list of paid bills.
So move Scheiner.
Move poll. Second Yant. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. I need a motion for the treasurer's report for June and July of 2021.
I'll motion to approve the treasurer's report for June and July.
Move by Kozlowski.
Second Scheiner.
Second by Scheiner. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Okay, we're moving on to the public comments. We, everyone who's on here's got four minutes. First one on the list was Ross Eaton. Name, name and address, Ross.
My name is Ross Eaton. Uh, I live at 4002 Murray Highland Circle in Murraysville. Uh, and I am the father of two Franklin Regional students. Tonight, I am imploring you to reconsider your masking policy and institute universal masking in all Franklin Regional schools. COVID conditions are escalating rapidly. Our county has been in a sustained period of substantial spread for two weeks now. And just today, Westmoreland County joined Allegheny County as it was elevated to the highest possible level of community spread. The CDC and American Academy of Pediatrics were already recommending that all students and teachers wear masks in schools. And now with these worsening conditions, the CDC recommends that everyone in areas with substantial or high spread, like ours, wear masks when indoors with others regardless of their vaccination status. Other local school districts are recognizing these new conditions and changing their policies accordingly to include universal masking. So, why are we asking our students and staff to return to buildings where these guidelines will not be followed? What credible primary medical literature led this school board to actively disregard the recommendations of America's foremost medical experts? The overwhelming majority of medical experts agree the K-12 students should be wearing masks right now based on sound scientific studies. In May of this year, the CDC published a comprehensive analysis of a large number of independent studies and concluded that masks are effective at reducing the spread of COVID and have, quote, "no significant adverse health effects for wearers." This updated expert summary of peer-reviewed findings directly refutes information sent to the school board recently and even explains how some studies have been, quote, "improperly characterized when used to support anti-masking arguments." This is just one illustration of why the board would need to examine the credibility and reproducibility of hundreds of publications in order to properly set a masking policy on its own. This would obviously be an impossible task, but the good news is that expert medical and scientific organizations provide recommendations for exactly this reason, and they unequivocally recommend universal masking in schools. If an electrician told you that the school's electrical system was dangerous and in need of repair, or if a health inspector told you that the kitchen conditions were unsanitary, or if a police officer told you that the school's security measures were insufficient, would you ignore their expert opinions? In all cases, the answer is no. You'd be endangering your students and opening the district up to lawsuits. So why are you ignoring the expert opinion of medical and epidemiological professionals? They have identified a danger and recommended a scientifically sound solution, universal masking. Many arguments made against masking rely heavily on the false belief that if a child chooses to wear a mask, it doesn't matter if others around them wear one. But the CDC explains, quote, "individual benefit increases with increasing community mask use." Therefore, masked students are put at more risk when others choose not to mask, especially if either party is unvaccinated. Doesn't the ideal of citizenship espoused in the Franklin Regional mission statement that you just read call for us to take up universal masking to protect our entire community? And beyond the health risks, optional masking introduces significant educational risks. Schools across the country that have started classes without universal masking are experiencing outbreaks and quarantines that disrupt educational continuity and compromise learning, not to mention the adverse social conditions caused by optional masking. But it's not too late for Franklin Regional to change its masking policy and avoid this fate. I respect this school district and its leadership, and because of that immense respect, I am especially dismayed by this optional masking decision. The Delta variant has dramatically changed the pandemic landscape and an optional masking policy feels disconnected from our current reality. The current conditions have led the CDC and AAP to call for universal masking in schools. And given Franklin Regional's record of excellence, I would expect the district to heed expert medical advice to ensure the safety and continuity of the learning environment for its students and teachers with the use of universal masking. Thank you for your time and I sincerely hope that you will reconsider the masking policy before the start of the school year. Thanks.
Thank you, Ross. Okay, Rachel Sharon?
Good evening.
Need your address and name.
My name is Rachel Sharon, 4038 Southern Farm Drive, Murraysville.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. I echo your sentiments in that very well-written statement. I'm a physician assistant and medical provider. Um, I have seen the very worst and I have worked through the ebbs and flows of this entire pandemic. I have managed people, then they come in, and unfortunately, I have seen the worst of the worst whenever I had to admit them to hospice because this pandemic is so abhorrent. I've coded children in the past. And it's not, coding children is not something that you ever want to do. Having three children of my own, not something that I ever want to do again. So with that being said, so many, many advancements have been made throughout the last several decades. Use your smartphone, your cars, what have you. Everything that you have is because of scientific knowledge, because of statistics, data, because of research. I also am a professor at Seton Hill University and I teach evidence-based medicine. Research is my bread and butter. Research is what gets us through everything and what makes us advance. It's all the scientific method. So, whenever we're looking at all of this data, here's what we know about this virus. The Delta variant has changed what we've known. The Alpha variant was not dramatically, it did not dramatically affect children. And now the Delta is 200 times more transmissible. Kids don't have immunity to it. Kids don't have the option right now to have vaccines. Kids also have not really had the, oh, graciously have not been able to be exposed to it in order to build any type of immunity. We can do this safely during a pandemic. What have we learned from, from the last several waves of a pandemic? We are more educated now, so why don't we use the education that we've actually learned from before in order to not be ignorant and use it for good? We procrastinated last time. That allowed things to be interrupted, schools, businesses shut down. Um, prevention is key here. Mask wearing does work. A lot of people think that mask wearing is... A lot of people think that masks do not work. However, the mask also allows the virus to be, mask virus, excuse me. Viruses are not transmissible alone. They have to be attached to a mucus droplet. So whenever you're looking at the mucus droplet, the mask actually does not prevent that with the virion attached. It has to be together. It doesn't just float. So masks have been proven to work. And we do not want to disrupt our community. We do not want to disrupt businesses. We need to learn and we need to grow from how, what we've learned from the past year and a half. So we need to do this for our kids' health. They have no options. COVID-19 is now a top 10 cause of death for adolescents. Previous to this, it was more car accidents, trauma. But you don't tell your children not to wear their seatbelt, correct? Even though, a lot of times, you're not really worried about them getting in a car accident, but every time you tell them to put it on. Thank you. So, from my stance, this is nothing to do with right or wrong or, or any type of politicization.
It's four minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Sharon?
Hello, Rupam Sharon, 4038 Southern Farm Drive. I'm speaking for a mask mandate. Thank you for having me. The number of people that, um, one sick person with a viral infection will infect on average is called the R-0. Following are the values for a few viruses from the lowest to the highest. Ebola II, COVID-19 original strain III, HIV IV, COVID-19 Delta strain VII, and chickenpox X. This is the reason that the virus, Delta virus, takes over quickly in an exponential manner, overwhelming resources. This is why around the country, as schools open, we have quickly closed with tens of thousands of students being infected immediately. Some other facts. It is true that less than 2% of the pediatric cases infected with the COVID-19 virus require hospitalization. However, 4,400 of these children have developed the dreaded multi-system inflammatory response with failure that leads to a prolonged hospitalization and increased mortality. Baylor College of Medicine in Houston, pediatric ICU, 100% occupied. Dallas, a sick child must wait for another to die before an ICU bed is available. Almost 100,000 new COVID infections were registered in children last week. North Carolina, Wisconsin, Utah, Missouri have shown that mask mandates effectively stymied the coronavirus Delta variant transmission in schools, showing very little school spread and no real community spread. Many schools without mask requirements in Mississippi, Georgia and Indiana have been forced to return to virtual learning within the past week. RSV, another worrisome and contagious lung-related pediatric disease, is surging around the country. Pediatricians and specialists are struggling to attend to non-COVID cases at the same time they're managing the sick COVID patients. Resources are just not there. Young adults in their 30s and 40s are being admitted to the hospital at a higher rate than they were in January of this year. Many of these people also have young children at home. The opportunity is today in order to manage a new highly contagious variant. The original virus, virus led to multiple days of school closing, staff call-offs, applications for more resources from the government, unpredictable days to return to school and work loss for parents. Unpredictably, unpredictability is that, is that what is ultimately takes the economic and the emotional toll. There are a terrible lot of lies going around the world. The worst of it is that half of the lies are true. That was Sir Winston Churchill at an age, at an age before even social media. So this tells us that no matter how much we defer in our opinion, banding together to follow the way of the states that have mitigated the spread of the disease, a simple mask wearing may just lead to the best outcome. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Beth Liston?
Beth Liston, 5903 Graybrook Drive. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Most of what I'll say comes from a letter I've already sent you. I want to make sure that you all hear it. I'll get right to it. The draft, the, uh, draft health and safety plan posted on your website indicates the district will utilize guidance from federal, state and local agencies, as well as CDC, PA Department of Health and PA Department of Education. You know, current CDC guidance recommends masking of all personnel, students and staff and visitors in K-12 schools. The Department of Education reiterates that guidance. Furthermore, the American Academy of Pediatrics guidance for schools identifies, quote, "it is critical to use science and data to guide decisions about the pandemic and school COVID-19 plans," unquote. The AAP highly recommends universal masking in schools and strongly advocates that all policy considerations for school plans should start with the goal of keeping all students safe and physically present. Given that clear and resounding guidance, how is your optional mask policy in alignment with any of that? What specific data and guidance have been used to generate a health and safety plan? While I can appreciate the recent survey, I was highly disappointed that this was the district's approach to appeasing families and providing a safe environment. I'm sure there are various factors to consider when making a decision regarding safety measures in our district, but frankly, there is only one answer in this case. It's backed by data and science. It's highly recommended by experts in the field of pediatric medicine and transmissible diseases. And it's supported by many in our community. Mandatory masking is a small... Mandatory masking is a small self-sacrifice that can mitigate irreparable damage. For many of our children, wearing a mask is simply a non-issue for them. My then-five-year-old wore one every day of kindergarten last year. She played a season of soccer wearing one with no issues and literally no complaints. For many parents, the same holds true for their own kids. Now is the time for a robust and comprehensive student health-safety strategy. We families expect and demand our schools to make the right decisions, not the easy decisions, when it comes to our kids. These decisions may not make everyone happy, but it is imperative. It is non-negotiable. Plain and simple, the safety of a student while in your school is your responsibility. Willingly and knowingly disregarding recommended health, school health guidance from all well-regarded pediatric and medical professional organizations is nothing short of negligence. When it comes to mandatory masking, the cost is a minor self-sacrifice. The impact of reducing risk is significant, but the consequences of not doing so may be severe, irreversible, and highly damaging. Risk mitigation needs to occur prior to an issue coming to fruition. The local data, including that from Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh, indicates an alarming trend in increased positivity, with a notable percentage being children, and this should sound the alarm at FR. Please don't wait until you are absolutely forced to change course. It's most certainly going to be too late. I implore you to implement mandatory masking at the onset of the school year. Refrain from putting the burden of trying to weather through this on the backs of only a portion of Franklin Regional families. We deserve the right to a quality education and a safe environment. In closing, I want to refer back to an old childhood friend many of us grew up with, we look to with great respect, Mr. Fred Rogers. Quote, "When I was a boy and I would see scary things in the news, my mother would say to me, 'Look for the helpers. You will always find people who are helping.'" Please demonstrate the leadership, fortitude, integrity, and courage that is needed right now.
Beth, that's four minutes.
Please be a helper. Our children are depending on you.
Thank you, Beth.
Richard Liston, 5903 Graybrook Drive. First, I'd like to thank you. My daughter went through kindergarten last year. We began that year very concerned, very nervous, but we found that everything a school was supposed to be doing, you were doing. The community, her classmates, and my family were safer because of that. I'll never forget asking her what her day was like, and in her answer, her tiny five-year-old answer, seeing woven through that answer the Herculean effort that had been put forth in masking, distancing, scheduling, logistics, technology, all the problems, all the solutions, and risks, and over time, I felt better about sending her so she could have her first school year. After generating all that goodwill, after prioritizing safety, at a time when a variant of this illness is more transmissible, more impactful to children, and more dangerous, you seem to be saying that safety is optional. I have to wonder why you would put parents in a position where they have to choose between sending their children to school despite the risk or finding a safer alternative. I myself am strongly considering homeschooling my daughter until she can be vaccinated. I don't understand the division surrounding the issue. Both sides seem to want the same thing, a healthy, uneventful school year. I don't understand accepting the risk of students being quarantined, schools being closed, and potentially the entire district shutting down. You are in an unenviable position. You can't make everyone happy, but you can make everyone safer. Considering that the ask amounts to a piece of cloth on your face, considering that our county is only 50% vaccinated, considering that Children's Hospital is filling up as we speak, I ask you to please continue to prioritize safety. Please mandate masks this school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Liston. Joe Dominik, okay.
Hi, my name is Joe Domensek. I live at 3335 Foneway Drive, and my daughter's going into first grade this year. I also teach theater and musical theater at Seton Hill University, where we've had, we've dealt with this restriction. It's pretty hard to teach theater and music with a mask on, but we did it. We did it, and I think we did it pretty well. I also want to thank you. I can't tell you how grateful my wife, how comforted we were to know that our daughter, who went through kindergarten as well last year, could do so and learn so well. The administration, the board, you made the right decisions all year. It was impressive. It was great leadership, and I'm sincerely thankful for it, and so is my wife. It's a great service that all of you have done for our community. I'm also in favor of masking, and believe me, I want to rip these masks off as much as everybody. I really thought this fall was the time. I kept thinking, this is it, this is it. And when you came out with the policy in July, I thought, optional masking. Maybe it was wishful thinking on my part, I don't know, but the data is clear, and everybody here quoted it far better than I was prepared to do. I was prepared to talk about the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the doctor I just talked to last week, everybody. Everybody talks about, the data's clear. And I do want to talk about this idea that it's somehow an infringement on liberty to wear a mask. It's not. It's not. It's, we're never, we all know that we're not at liberty to create an unsafe environment for anybody else, just as I'm not at liberty to drive 100 miles down, 100 miles per hour down Sardis Road because it somehow is, I need that for my personal liberty. We all know that. So I don't think we should entertain those arguments. I think as hard as it is to do right now, we have to do the right thing. And you have all done the right thing, and I'm very grateful for it, and the health and safety plan allows for us to look at things again, which it should do. We need to look at it again now. There's no argument about what the right thing is to do, so I implore you to do the right thing and have us wear these masks, especially for unvaccinated children. They deserve that, and then we will all rejoice when we can finally take them off. I'll be there with everybody who wants to wear a mask and doesn't want to wear a mask. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Joe. Jesse McPherson?
Jesse McPherson, 3654 Forbes Trail Drive. First of all, I want to congratulate you guys on the wonderful school you've built. It looks very impressive, and I'm very thankful that you did that. I really don't like wearing this mask. I don't enjoy it. I don't do it for fun. I do it to show respect to other people that I'm responsible. I don't actually, I'm not actually worried for myself because I'm vaccinated, but only 50, 50.1% of Westmoreland County is vaccinated. It has a lot in common with those schools in the South that we're looking at, where Madison County School District in Alabama, first week of school, 100 students tested positive. Loudas County in Georgia, 175. 4,000 students in Atlanta City School District just tested positive in one week. This Delta variant is different. I thought we were going to be done with this, too. I had actually stopped wearing a mask this summer when I go out to Home Depot. I thought it was over, but this Delta variant is worse. It's much, much worse, and kids are getting it now. Kids didn't get COVID from the other strands. They are getting it from this. Now, I don't know if it's going to be deadly for them, but I don't want to take that risk. And I'm sure you're going to hear a lot of arguments about freedom and all this stuff, and I hear them all the time. I'm a 40-year-old white guy. All my friends are conservative. I understand. I know what they're going to say. But you know what else I heard from them all last year? I heard, oh, it's just the flu. 700,000 people almost have died of just the flu. It's not just the flu. It's a coronavirus, which is the same sort of virus that the flu is, but it's not the flu. It's much deadlier. If you want school to happen normally, if you want sports to happen, if you want the prom to happen, you're going to have to do something because these kids are going to get it, and you're going to have to shut down. I don't want that to happen. I want this to go away, but until people get vaccinated, and in Westmoreland County, they're not, we're not going to have normalcy. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Grand, Anna Marie Grand?
I am Anna Marie Grand from 582 Monticello Drive in Delmont. I'm here again to discuss the optional mask policy for the 2021-2022 school year. If this board is truly dead-set on not requiring masks until there is a mandate to do so, I would like to propose a minimum middle ground. I would like to ask the district to revise and finalize classroom assignments based on the preferences indicated in the surveys we submitted last week. Group masked students into classrooms together and require masks in those rooms at a minimum until vaccines are widely available for these kids. I know this would be logistically difficult and create more work upfront, but difficult doesn't even begin to describe the decision that you've asked concerned families to make. The optional mask policy leaves concerned families with no option other than to choose between quality of education and health. This proposal would at least provide us with an option to send our children to school safely in person. The board clearly stated two weeks ago that people should have the right to choose, but there are plenty of items that this district has decided that parents don't have the right to choose. I don't have the option to allow my child to play on the monkey bars at recess, to choose for my child to wear flip-flops to school, or to allow my child to wear a spaghetti-strapped tank top. While I don't necessarily disagree with these rules, I also wouldn't be allowed to choose from my own, even if I did. These are just a few examples of decisions where, according to the district, we don't have the right to choose, despite the fact that these choices affect the safety of each child on an individual level or don't affect safety at all. Now we're talking about a serious virus during a global pandemic that is becoming increasingly more dangerous for young children who don't even have the opportunity to be vaccinated yet. Now, all of a sudden, we have a right to choose, even though this individual decision has the potential to affect the health and safety of other children, not just our own. I'd like to hear the criteria for deciding when we have the right to choose and when we don't, because I'd like to choose for my child to be at school safely. Franklin Regional is supposed to be a top-tier school that places value on education, yet this board, with only one member that I can find who has any medical background, finds itself qualified to disregard expert opinions. That decision is both reckless and negligent, as is evident by the mask quarantines now happening all over the country at schools that opened over the last two weeks with optional mask policies. We all know that people are dying from this virus. We know that people are getting seriously ill and are having long-term side effects that will likely plague them for the rest of their lives. And now, as this virus has begun to affect more and more children, what an incredible opportunity we have to teach our children to care about one another instead of just themselves, to care about their classmates who might have asthma or maybe are immunocompromised and would be at greater risk of serious complications from this virus. What an incredible opportunity to teach them that not every decision is about them as an individual, that sometimes we make choices for the greater good, to protect those around us. I can think of no better way to show these kids what citizenship from our own mission statement truly means. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna Marie. Nicole Benarski?
Thank you. I'm Nicole Benarski. I live at 4300 Salzburg Road in Murraysville, and I am the proud mom of one future and two current Franklin Regional students. As a mom, I can be sure of several things. I know that every parent here, all of us love our children with every fiber of our being. I know that if your child, like my children, is under the age of 12, he or she is not yet eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. As a physician, I can assure you that the most effective way to protect yourself and your loved ones is to get a vaccine. So as a parent and a doctor, where does this leave me in terms of providing that safe and effective learning environment that my children so desperately want and need? We have but a few, a few tools in our arsenal, and that is the sad truth. One such tool is a mask. They are simple and effective. Another sad truth? Science has yet to determine precisely how effective mask-wearing is at protecting the wearer as well as those around them. There are simply too many other variables, thus the reason the CDC still includes masked contacts in tracing. How virulent is the strain being considered? What is the duration of exposure? What was the viral load of the infected individual? Just to name a few. Without those questions answered, how can anyone feel confident about discarding their child's mask? As an otolaryngologist, I realize that unless she is wearing an N95, then the mask my child is wearing is only preventing exposure to respiratory droplets, saliva, and mucus. There is a chance that aerosolized virus will linger in the air and find its way behind a mask. How likely is that to occur or cause infection? Other unanswered questions. But so far, no study has demonstrated actual clinical evidence of the airborne transmission of the SARS-CoV-2 virus. The overwhelming majority of transmission is via large respiratory droplets, spit and snot, which is the reason that medical staff can safely care for infected patients despite being only 95% protected with their N95 masks. I know as a surgeon that the misinformation about the potential harm mask-wearing might do is simply that, misinformation. Surgeons, nurses, essentially all staff members in an operating room, provide countless hours of data regarding safety in wearing masks. There is no reliable documentation that masks are unsafe, that they contribute to lower oxygenation, retained carbon dioxide, or that they lead to any weakening of the immune system. In children, there is not one peer-reviewed medical journal that has published a study linking mask use in children to impaired lung development or function. So if masks are effective and safe, why aren't we using them to protect our children and thus keep them in school where they belong? As a mom, I don't have the heart to tell my kids that if other schools are demonstrating the trend that is to come, then all of our children will be back at home soon. After the school board in Brevard County, Florida, voted 3 to 2 in favor of optional masks, the district sent 1,060 students and employees home just days after the start of the school year for a 14-day quarantine. Between August 2nd and August 6th, Mississippi's Department of Health identified nearly 1,000 students and over 300 employees with positive COVID tests, which, as Dr. or Mr. McPherson alluded to, led to over 4,400 students and nearly 5,000 individuals in quarantine. Many of those involved schools had optional mask policies. One district identified six staff and 41 students with COVID-19 after a week-long staggered start compared to just five staff and five individual students in 2020 when the masks were mandatory. 839 Arkansas students and staff.
Four, over four minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
David Murphy, 33 Thrive Bendin Circle. First, I want to thank you for your service, Mr. Engling and Franklin Regional Board members, superintendent. I'm here to represent my family, which is two young men who are in fourth grade and fifth grade, well, going in the fifth and sixth, and my wife, who is an employee of the district. I'm here to ask you to consider maintaining your current optional masking policy. I'm asking you to rise above the noise coming from many places and the pressures you may feel to, to change and move to an easy path. I believe you want to keep optional masking, but there's a lot of pressure from residents and who may want you to keep, to move into something that's mandatory. If you move around the community and attend youth events, it's clear that the majority of the people here don't wear masks, and their children don't wear masks, and it's obvious that's what we want here in our community. We know that schools and students' events are not sources for great community spread. We know that children are not more at risk for COVID than they are for influenza and several other diseases. We know that if you take a holistic approach at the problem and look at the effect that the masking has on children, there are plenty of negative effects when you mask children, particularly in the long run. My son is, my son Finn, he's going into fifth grade. He hasn't had a normal school year since third grade, right? Third grade was cut short. Fourth grade, there were oppressive masks and masking and COVID control measures, and now this year, going into more masks would be just, I think would be terrible for him. I'm not sure he even remembers a normal school year now. Second grade was the last time he lived a normal life. That's, it makes me upset. It makes me disturbed. I'm not sure he knows what normal is anymore, and it's time for the schools and the kids to return to normalcy. It's time for us to move forward and live our normal lives. It's very important that we move forward and get to a normal place, and I'm here to tell you today that as a family member, as a parent, I can't do it anymore. I have to move on, and if Franklin Regional moves into a mandatory mask policy, I was just informed that Penn Trafford will continue with an optional mask policy moving forward this year, and I will move to a place where it's illegal to have mandatory mask policies. There are states like that. Or I'll move across Route 22 where I can live my life. I have freedom of choice to do what's best for my children. Freedom is important, and we're at the crossroads where we need to choose freedom. We need to do the right things. I ask you to rise above and do the right things right now. It's important for our community. Last year, there were last-minute oppressive COVID measures from the state and the Board of Health, right? The Department of Education and the Board of Health. This year, they suddenly changed some of the rules for the consequences if you have COVID that shows up, right? And it's time to rise above those, rise above the, boy, I'm so nervous. I'm pretty emotional. This is important. This is ridiculously important to me. I'm serious.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you, thank you. It's time to move to do the right thing regardless of your term consequences. I beg you to do what the community wants and do what's right for the children. It's so important, and this is the time to do it. Ask the state oppression and do what's right for your people. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Jessica Connor?
Jessica Connor, 3015 Juniper Court. I am not one to speak publicly. I wasn't planning to come and speak at any time, but as we're one week from the start of school and the conversation of masks is still undecided, I felt that I couldn't stay silent any longer for my kids. The truth is that the first, this is the first time since my kids started at Franklin seven years ago that I do not feel safe with them at school. This is a total reiteration, but I don't understand how with all the guidance from the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics encouraging indoor masking for everyone over two years old, that this is still even up for discussion. Surrounding counties have all have alarming rising cases, and it's just a matter of time before a substantial status is declared in Westmoreland County. I would understand if the district started the year with masks with the notion to reevaluate maybe in a few weeks, but to start the year off with many families returning from vacations in many different states, visiting with family, all to congregate together in a small room is absurd to me. You can give us no assurance that the kids in the classroom are not carrying COVID. You cannot tell us that their teachers are vaccinated or not sick if they also choose not to wear a mask. There are no assurances that the classroom my child will be entering to will be safe. The children under 12 are not eligible to receive a vaccine or protect themselves in any way besides masking. You must base your decisions on keeping students and employees safe, keeping the schools open, not caving to pressures from parents who feel that masks do not work. These same parents are the ones that I feel will complain when their children are forced back to online school, which I feel will happen, I'm sure, if we're not masking. The objections to masks are not that they don't work. The science is clear that masks work. Masks have become a political issue that I don't feel belongs in our schools. You require parents to submit medical information at the start of the year. You have fire drills to protect them from fires, drills to protect them from active shooters. You screen to ensure that parents in the classroom are not child predators, but a potentially deadly virus could enter the classroom, and I feel like you're doing nothing. If a parent told you that their child wearing a helmet when they played football was inconvenient or that they couldn't play with it, you would require it because that is what is needed to keep that child safe when they're playing. How are you keeping my child safe from people bringing COVID into the classroom? Even if one kid ends up in the hospital this year, that is unnecessary. Not even one child should be considered expendable to the comfort or inconvenience of others. Something that keeps one child from dying from COVID is worth the discomfort of everyone. Both my children were online last year, and they're very excited to go back to school. I want them to go back to school. They deserve to go back to school, but not if they are not protected. My one daughter has severe asthma. The thought of what could happen to her if she gets COVID scares me to death every day. When you make these decisions, you're not considering those children that could be compromised by them. Base coverings are a simple way to ward off transmissions. Your job is to keep our kids safe and not tell us what the science says. The science should be left to the doctors. We need to listen and trust the people who are the doctors and who are telling us that kids should be masked in school. I expect that Franklin will fall in line with neighboring districts and revise the masking policy before the start of school on Monday. I know that last year, we had a very good school year, and I think that a lot of that was probably because of the masking. So I hope that you will reconsider that. And to the gentleman that mentioned about sports, I just want to say that I think too, a lot of that was outside. So I don't think we know yet when we put a bunch of these kids inside what will happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Maureen Wilder?
Maureen Wilder, 5938 Graybrook. I'm a parent to two students in the district. Both my children are under 12, so they can't get that added layer of protection with the vaccine. I already emailed you over the weekend with my disappointment. I'm losing faith that the FR District has the best interest, specifically the health and safety of the children in this community, in mind. By defying the recommendations of subject matter experts, the administration and school board are needlessly and recklessly putting our children at risk. We all know the benefits of in-person learning, and in order to prioritize the safe return to in-person instructions, the CDC, AAP, PA Department of Health, and the Department of Education are recommending indoor or universal indoor masking. Why is the district ignoring and actively going against the experts? I'd like to understand the facts, the data, the resources that the district used in making this decision. I'd also like to understand why you feel those resources are more credible than the CDC and our medical experts. As parents and members of the community, we all want this school year to be a success. The best way we can set our children and our teachers up for success is by complying with the recommendations of these experts and minimizing the risk of an outbreak. Please help me understand your rationale. How are you justifying this decision? How can you claim that you're doing everything reasonably, everything reasonable to protect the healthy and stacy of our students if you're defying medical experts? Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Brush?
Hi, my name is Mike Brush. I live at 3817 Edinburgh Drive. I didn't intend to speak tonight. I sent an email over the weekend, but I felt the need to talk after entering the room tonight. We keep hearing the data and the science, but it's always the one side that the media gets the push to you. Rand Paul, an actual doctor in the Senate, is now banned from YouTube. He's a doctor. Nobody can hear what he has to say. We keep hearing about the science. 97% of virus-sized particles can get through these pieces of paper and these cloth masks we're putting on these children. With that being said, every person here tonight, mask, not mask, nobody would have showed up here tonight if this was like the movie Outbreak and it's as deadly as everyone's trying to make it out to be. Mask or not a mask, nobody would have showed up here tonight. I know I personally would be sitting in my house if people were just keeling over on the street like everyone has, you believe. Children, one in 1 million or 20, people 25 and under, one in 1 million chance of dying. Those are the actual numbers. We don't put our kids in a rubber helmet when they go outside because lightning strikes are more likely to happen than a child dying from COVID. We keep hearing about this, but in the district, did anybody die last year? When college football was coming back, all the media people were saying, there's going to be deaths galore. Not one person died. These are the strongest, healthiest people in our society. We know what affects the senior citizens. Okay, I speak from experience. My family had the virus. When did we get it? In December, when every restaurant and bar and everything was closed down and schools were out. The week of Christmas, we got it. We were sitting in our house. We wore masks when we went to Giant Eagle, and we got it. So we tried to take those, we tried to do the things we were told to do. We keep hearing the CDC. The CDC has flip-flopped 9,000 times over the past year. I can't teach my kids irrational fear. I coach a basketball program. We ran our program in December, and the day I watched a doctor drop his daughter off to our workout without a mask on told me all I needed to know. Why would a doctor do that? He was fresh off work. Why would he do that if he felt so concerned about this virus? We hear about the science. I don't think anybody, you don't need to be a doctor to look at the data and see what it says. There's plenty of studies out there. I mean, the Cleveland Clinic's saying that natural immunity is better. We never hear about natural immunity. It's vaccine, vaccine, vaccine. We now know you have the vaccine, you still can spread the virus. So we keep hearing the science. I say the same thing the gentleman said before. I'm new out here. This is two years we moved out, removed out here because we wanted, the neighborhood we lived in had a lot of these thoughts of, you know, taking away freedom and whatnot. You know, I can't see how my kids continue in the school if this is, if we can't have, you know, let the parents make the decision. The government is not the parent of my children, all right? They're just not, and I'm not going to have my kids grow up and be, you know, irrationally afraid of stuff that they shouldn't be afraid of. It's just very frustrating because, again, if you wear a mask, you think they work great, then just, you don't need to worry about me. One thing I'll say is, and I will ask this question, the kids sit most of the day, correct? So I can walk into a restaurant when this was all, everyone had to wear the mask, with a mask on, walk 10 feet, sit down, take my mask off. What is the science on that? Again, I say I don't want my kids to have irrational fears the rest of their life when I know we had it, they recovered from it in like two days. I would just say, leave with this thought that, you know, everybody's going to die, okay? I tell my kids, everyone's going to die. It's your time, it's your time. But how about we teach these kids how to live? And wearing a mask every day and stunting their breathing is not going to do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael. Melanie Dietz?
My name is Melanie Ivankovich Dietz, and my address is 4095 Golden Mile Highway. I didn't anticipate that I would make it here tonight. I had this crazy weekend. I was pulling weeds at my mom's plum on Friday. Right around desk, I got home and my husband said, Violet, our 10-year-old, said she's been coughing. She's been coughing lately. She's one of those allergy kids, because she's always snotty and filthy and full of crap all the time. And anyway, so he said, he said, you know, she's been, she's been coughing more than normal. So I had gotten her an allergy cleaner thing for her room, you know, an air cleaner thing, and I had talked to her doctor. She's been taking the same allergy medicine. I was concerned it was losing efficacy, so we got her on a new medicine. But the last few days, she also started like wheezing, and my daughter's also a bit of a drama queen. I don't know where she gets it, but she is. And she's also very smart. She's a very bright girl. She's a gifted kid. She's got her IEP to prove it, all that good stuff. But so she tends to be difficult, so I tend to not listen to her, right? She's a pain. And so anyway, the last three days, she was wheezing a little bit, and I'm like, okay, well, it's allergy season. There's allergies everywhere. I completely ignored that. So anyway, so I got home on Friday, and my husband said, she's wheezing a lot. So she came downstairs and she said, my chest hurts. And she said, you know, it's hard to climb the steps. And I was like, whatever, whatever. And my husband said, you know what? We've given her cough syrup, it's not helping her at night. Like, I think we should take her in, meaning to the urgent care. But it was 9:05 already, out of luck. And I was like, I'm not taking this kid to the emergency room. It's ridiculous. She's having an allergy attack. Ridiculous. My husband's like, well, we got to do something. I don't like it. Okay, fine, I'll call, ask a nurse. I called UPMC, ask a nurse. And the nurse asked me some questions. No, yes, we mask. Yes, we're this. Yes, we're, we have our shots. Yes, we're very careful. We're not perfect, but we're pretty careful. We don't want the kids getting sick. And my daughter's really bright, so she's terrified she's going to get COVID, terrified of it. So, you know, even to keep her pleased, like a lot of times, I'll go out to the car and she'll be like, mommy, where's your mask? And she'll run in and get me one. She's very conscientious that way. So anyhow, so I put the phone up to her body so the ask a nurse lady can hear this, and she said, I think you'd need to bring her in. Okay, well, bring her in where? Can I take her to East? No, you got to bring her to Children's. Oh, great. And I have to admit, like, I was exhausted. I've been pulling weeds all day. I didn't want to go. I put the kid in the car, I huffed out of the house, changed out of my gardening clothes, ran out of the house, got her down there. We waited, rolling my eyes the whole time. Anyway, after we were in the ER and, you know, they did all their ER-ing, you know, and they asked their questions, how much? My daughter, it turned out, had a severe asthma attack. I did not see it coming. I didn't know it wasn't in our family. It came out of nowhere, and she was 10, which is rare. They showed me the film of her chest, and it had, you know, the googly mess in it, and we were terrified she had COVID. Of course, she didn't have COVID. She had a regular old, everyday cold. And it set off an allergy attack that put her in the NICU, within the PICU, which means, in case you don't know, Pediatric Intensive Care Unit, on oxygen for four days. Your kid has terrible memories of school, I know, because it's been terrible.
Your four minutes are up.
My kid is terrified to go back to school.
Your four minutes are up.
Be aware of that.
Thank you. Steve Watson?
Okay, ma'am, you're done. Ma'am? Ma'am, that's enough. Ma'am, you're done. Okay, Steve, you're up.
Thank you. Steve Watson, 5845 Maymont Road in Murraysville. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of mandatory masking, especially for young children under the age of 12 who cannot yet be vaccinated. The Delta variant is more contagious and more virulent for young people, including children, than previous strains of COVID-19. The numbers are trending upwards similarly to the way they did last year. My wife and I very much want to send our son to kindergarten in person, but he too has asthma, and this also applies to children with diabetes, with other cardiac or respiratory disease or immunocompromised children. Not requiring masking is in direct opposition to CDC and American Board of Pediatric Guidelines as well as Pennsylvania Department of Health guidelines. These organizations did not come to this recommendation lightly. They wanted to avoid it just like the rest of us did, but they saw the data, realized that's what was necessary. Obviously, we all want to return to normal, but in the meantime, the best thing we can do is to keep our children safe, as safe as possible, by using masking, social distancing, and proper hygiene. As a physical therapist, I worked in a COVID recovery unit during the height of the pandemic, what we thought was the height of the pandemic last winter. This was a unit specifically created because the hospitals were full. We didn't have room in our hospitals for all the patients with COVID. Numbers are trending that that can be, that that can happen again. This is a brutal disease and very, very real. And in regards to the masking, scientists talk about the Swiss cheese model. No masking is not perfect, but if you imagine slices of Swiss cheese, if you take them, the holes aren't going to line up together. So you take masking, you take hygiene, you take social distancing, put them all together, and then we'll provide the best possible protection we can for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Matthew Ackerman?
My name is Matthew Ackman. I live at 4211 Bulltown Road, and just want to start off by thanking everybody here at the board here. I have three children in Franklin Regional. I have nothing but good things to say about their experience as students and my experience as a parent with them attending school here for the past six years. Earlier, somebody said it best, I think, that we're all here to do what is best for the kids. We want nothing but the best for our children. So, you know, we've already noticed things can get, kind of get heated, but I just would like to provide my perspective as a parent and my understanding of what's all going on this day and age regarding COVID and the mask mandates. get, kind of get heated, but I just would like to provide my perspective as a parent and my understanding of what's all going on this day and age regarding COVID and the mask mandates. This craze for masking entire population being pushed down from the federal government has never been implemented in, recently, since the medical, well, since the medical industry, and we as a society knew that it was ineffective, and it brought health, adverse health effects. Various research, including a 2015 study from the University of Wales, discussed the implications and the damage that can happen from cloth masks being worn. In addition to prior studies, and studies during the COVID response with masks and their adverse health effects, ineffectiveness and ineffectiveness, states that did have more strict mask mandates and social distancing mandates did not, in fact, have lower rates of COVID, of COVID infections. New York and California being the two most prominent examples of that. So, and furthermore, I've heard a lot about CDC recommendations and their studies and then their research. But I really think we're coming to a fallacy of logic there with the appeal to authority. And I want to start off by thinking of the analogy, cigarette companies used to have doctors and scientists who were able to come up with studies that said smoking did not lead to increased health effects, adverse health effects. This is even into the 90s. But those scientists and those doctors were paid by tobacco companies. And when you would like to think about what the NIH does, they, they have about $30 billion of grants, estimated $30 billion of grants, that they pass out to different researchers all across the country. Considering the fact that the NIH had lied about their role in terms of the gain-of-function research with the Wuhan virus, I do not think that they're very credible anymore. And then with the CDC, they've been making plenty of recommendations for every American to mask up, social distance, when it comes to, on the southern border, where we have many people coming in with various diseases, including COVID-19, they're suspiciously silent. So the, the appeal to the authority of the federal government, I do not think is, is the proper way to go about determining how we need to do the masking. It is our responsibility as a community and as parents to make sure we do what is right. I've also heard a lot about vaccines. Before, we were told that vaccines would be 100%. We'd be safe from, yes, from all different strands. But now we're hearing we need booster shots. If people are very concerned about their children, plenty of research has been done about zinc, vitamin D, andivermectin as well. If we want to do full, comprehensive protection of our children, let's promote that as well. Thank you very much.
Four minutes. Thank you. Thank you, Matthew. Okay, that's the end of public comments for tonight. Thank you, everybody, for your input.
I wanted to say something.
Sure.
I know that our next agenda item is solicitor's comments. And I would like to thank everybody for coming tonight. I've read all of your emails. And, and some of you, I, I felt like you were being patronizing because you read the email that you sent me that I read already. I've been characterized, along with the other board members, as being reckless, defiant. I can assure you that I am neither reckless nor defiant. I would like to reframe this question. First of all, I, I would like to say that a helmet is not a medical device, but masks are regulated by the FDA and are medical devices. So that is the difference between a helmet and a mask. But I would like to reframe this. Is it within my authority to mandate mask-wearing? And I know our solicitor is the next to speak on the agenda, so that is my question.
You're asking that of me, correct?
Yes, I am.
Well, clearly, the parties that should be making this decision is the State Department of Health, the legislature, and the governor's office. And clearly, they've punted for the last year and a half over this subject matter. Everybody here this evening has referenced CDC, health departments in various times and so forth, and none of them have, and they have the ability. The Health Department, the governor, the, well, the governor may be limited a little bit now. He can make some decisions and have to get approval from the legislature to move forward with this. And they have not. None of them have. They have not given direction. And the school code, it's, it's very questionable at best if a school board has the authority to mandate a device like a mask in the, in the schools. That's really the question. Who has the authority? I believe that that authority is with, if we had a county health department, like Allegheny County, they could mandate that. Clearly, the state could mandate, and the legislature can mandate. I believe that it's very questionable that, that this board would have the ability to mandate that. For the, for the students, there have been some cases across the country that already have reached certain, different courts of, of state courts. None here through Pennsylvania yet have reached the final outcome. But the case in Indiana, their ruling was in the, for colleges, it's because you had an option to go to another college. You chose to come to that college. Students don't really have an option to, to what school to go to. Students have to go to their public school. They can't go to another public school. So there could be a, okay, here's the thing. I've listened to everybody. So we're not going to have a debate here this evening, with all due respect. If any of you would, well, no, I, here's the thing. I'm sure there are other people in the room that may have thought some of the things that you said were wrong or right. This is not, wait. I am, I am, sir, with all due respect, okay, we're not going to have a debate. And anybody that wants to have a debate, I'm more than willing to meet with you and talk to you at any time, but we're not going to do it at a public meeting. We're not, ma'am, you've already been out of order once. Please don't, anybody become out of order. I said, we're not going to do that this evening. This is not the, I was asked a question of the board, and I'm answering it. So right now, the Secretary of Ed was asked that question. If a school board has the ability to make this decision, and he said he was unsure. So that's the Secretary of Education for the state of Pennsylvania. And he was unsure if they had that. But they're, they're kicking this back. At this point, this board has made a decision, and it may change as time goes on. It may change this evening. But at this point, the board has made a decision to, if there is a mandate order from any of the governing entities that, that have the right to do so, they would follow that. At this point, all that there is is a recommendation, and their recommendation is, at this point, this board has taken the decision that they are going to stay the course of making it optional to families to make those decisions. This is not question and answer, ma'am. Thank you. Does any of the other board members have a question? Yes.
You stated, I just want everyone out here on, I'm sorry, that's, to know that when we made this decision, we've also tried to make every single accommodation that we could for students who want to mask, for parents who want their students to be masked. We had the discussion earlier, we talked about this, and how hard Dr. Pines is working to assure that we can, we can try to sep, to not separate, but to divide up people who want to mask and not mask, so that we're as safe as possible within the rules.
That's correct.
That's all we can do. You know, I mean, half of, not half of you, in some cases, half of the people want masks, in some cases, we don't have a choice. We can't split ourselves. We can't go either side. But we can do every single thing possible to give everybody an education with a mask on or a mask off.
That's correct, Mr. Yan. Unfortunately, all of your concerns, this board has deliberated, thought about it, asked for additional information. Unfortunately, the people that should be making this decision sit in Harrisburg, and they're not making decisions. Those are the people that, that have the power to put a mandate in if they feel, and have more information than any of us probably have in front of them. And the Department of Education has not made that decision, and the Department of Health for the state has not made that decision. They, they, a year ago, they made those decisions. Why aren't they making them now? That's, there's where your message needs to really be heard. Well, they're not leaders then. They're not leaders, unfortunately, then. And they're dividing, and this is, again, not the board's making this comment. This is a comment from me seeing this. Every night, I'm at a school board meeting, we're having the same discussions. They are dividing communities over something that they should lead at. And if they want to be elected, they should lead. And that's, unfortunately, where, where we need to send our message.
Okay.
We don't, and I believe, it's, it's my opinion, we don't have the ability to do that.
Mr. Matt, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President, if, if, folks, this isn't, folks, folks, this is not question and answer. But I would like to, if I can, make a comment, because I listen to you and I, and I, and I read your letters. And two weeks ago, I sat in this room, in this chair, when 30% of the people in the room were in favor of, of masking everyone. And there were people shouting them down, including a pediatrician who stood here. And, and I spoke up and said that I respect the minority opinion, that it needs to be heard, and that we need to take it to heart. I have, everybody sitting here has been a Franklin Regional parent at some point in time. I've graduated three from this district. My stepdaughter just went back to Youngstown State yesterday. Her sisters, who are rising juniors and twins at the high school, are in my home. My four-year-old and two-year-old grandsons live in Delmont, and their baby brother's on the way in December. The spit and snot thing hit home for me. I've been a tuba player for a long time, and I played my tuba in church last year with a mask over the top of it. Bought it on Amazon. There's a cottage industry out there, thanks to COVID, in a number of areas. And I thought it was silly. Honestly, I thought it was silly. I put this big thing over the bell on my tuba, and down at New Lundsberg Presbyterian, I played it on a couple of songs. And when I was done, I went to pull the horn down, and I put my hand on the top of the bell, and, and it was damp. And I was amazed, because there's a hell of a lot of pipe in a tuba. If you straightened the doggone thing out, it would reach from here to the, to the otolaryngologist. I know how to pronounce it, because Dr. Kim and I became much more friendly than I like. Yeah. I sat here covering a trach, March of 2018. Yeah. And my wife is pharmacy tech at East and delivers meds to ICU. So the HIPAA is not being compromised. I get daily updates as to what's going on. Nobody on this board or the administration is acting in a cavalier fashion. Nobody on this board or in this administration, I don't speak for all of them, but I listen to all of them. No one here is unconcerned. No one here is cavalier. It's not the Wild West at any one of our schools, and certainly not the two sitting across the street. Just like HIPAA, I'm not at liberty to talk about anything that happens behind closed doors with this board. But I can assure you that we are not unconcerned. I can assure you that there, that we're not entering this school year without mitigation efforts. I turn my ears off as soon as I hear any political talk, as soon as I hear about tyranny and freedoms and that kind of thing, and mandates and dictates from the government, and this is America, damn it. But I do listen to concerns about people with little kids wearing masks and what their mental state may be, and how their lives have been disrupted. I hear that. And I also hear about health concerns. And having been immunocompromised myself, last Novometh in November, COVID symptoms in February, and then everybody else woke up to it. We're paying attention. And I'm sorry that we can't possibly make a decision that, that works for everyone. And I genuinely believe that we could sit here, nine of us, and say, okay, everybody get in a mask, and we can't do a damn thing about the kids that show up that don't have one, because the law is the law. And we don't, we're not legislators. So please know that you're being heard.
You too.
I'd like to make a comment. First of all, thank everybody, both sides of the coin here, for coming out tonight.
Your mic's off.
Technology, sorry. Thank, thank you, everybody, for coming out here tonight. The gentleman that spoke last, I think, said something that's very powerful for all of us sitting in this room, parents, grandparents, whatever. I said this before, and I'll say it again. Read and research some of the things that you can do to prevent problems for your children, yourself, and your family. The facts are out there. The things are that we're not being told a lot of things as to what we can do to be preventative. We're just being told all the horrible stuff that goes on. So I said this before, and I'll say it again. Read and research, because there's a lot of wonderful things out there that you can do to be proactive, to do the best thing you can to protect your family. And we need to all be respectful of each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We're moving on to solicitor comments. Do you have any comments tonight? Thank you. Okay, consent agenda items. Items removed from consent agenda for separate action by members of the board. Items number 23 and 25 are to be removed for tonight.
Could you read those again, Herb?
23 are going to be removed. We're not taking any action on 23 or 25 tonight. 27, you want it open for discussion, right? Well, it's removed, period, so. All right, 27. Anybody else? All right, I'd like to have a motion for consent agenda, consent agenda items 1 through 22, 24, 26, for a motion. Removed, Paul Scheiner? Oh, Bill Yan, I'm sorry. Paul Scheiner seconded. Thank you. All right. Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries 9-0. Okay, number 27, Mr. Yan for discussion.
I gotta get, I lost it here, sir, I'm sorry. The Heritage Deconstruction Project, my understanding is that the intent right now is to do this, first of all, the question I have, is this, is I have, is this, is this the actual bid to do the work or the, or the engineering?
This is the, this is to go out to bid, this is not to approve a bid for the deconstruction.
Okay, my comment still is that I believe this was not in the budget at the first time, and I believe the budget should be altered to consider it, to include it at some point in time, rather than having it come in under the contingency funds from the new school. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Okay, I need a motion for number 27 for consent agenda item.
So moved, Nevin.
Second?
Second.
Second mark. Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries 7-2. Okay, new business, Westmoreland Online Academy Consortium, Dr. Pirino.
First item is for a consortium between Franklin Regional, Hempfield, and Norwin to form the Westmoreland Online Academy. A lot of times, as we're looking across the region, we know that public schools need to provide those types of options for our families, and so we're looking at the creation of a long-term partnership with these two districts to provide synchronous online instruction to students in K to 5 for right now.
Okay, yes. I have to have a motion and a second first. I need a motion for Westmoreland Online Academy. Move Ms. Thotler?
Second.
Second, Mr. Moderator. Okay, any comments?
Yes, the intermediate unit operates an e-academy and provides many online courses. How does this relate to the e-academy? Is it separate? What's the motivation behind it?
The e-academy is an asynchronous program that does not provide live instruction to students, whereas this will be live instruction on a daily basis for our students. And so it's really more toward the vision of what we have for online instruction and online opportunities for students. We will use the academy in situations where families, for whatever reason, prefer asynchronous instruction.
Does that mean that you believe that we might have a better opportunity to keep folks, students in our district and their families from choosing charter school?
That is the, that's the intent of the program. We also want a situation where the students in that program have an opportunity to build relationships with their teacher. And an asynchronous model is far better for doing that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, synchronous model.
That's what threw me. I understand your response now. So, so you do think that it's, it's a better way to educate some people in some areas?
I do.
And apparently, our partners here, Hempfield, and I can't remember the other one, they're in agreement with that?
They are. That's what, sort of why we formed the consortium, because of the belief that we can do a lot of things to ensure the quality of curriculum, ensure the quality of instruction, to provide, to support the students, from mental health services to other intervention services, in a way that's more robust and more rigorous.
Do you have any thoughts about whether or not this type of training should be available through the e-academy?
Training in terms of?
Well, you said that this offers synchronous education as opposed to asynchronous education.
Right.
Not clear to me why the e-academy couldn't offer synchronous education. It's just that's, there's a great wealth of courses, and last year during the pandemic, the e-academy grew by leaps and bounds. Many, many students were taking advantage of it. And so, it seems to me that there may be some efficiencies if it was part of the e-academy, and it may open it up broader to more school districts.
Quite frankly and quite honestly, from the administrative standpoint, I have almost zero interest in combining with, with the e-academy for this service, for a number of reasons, in terms of our ability to control the quality of the curriculum, our ability to control the quality of the teacher, our ability to ensure a proper training for the teacher, and the fact that the, our teachers who are teaching that program are teaching full-time. Whereas, a lot of times, the academy is teaching people, it's a side hustle, it's a side gig, where they're working outside of their regular day to provide that online instruction. This is a dedicated, committed teacher to the students that they serve. And we worked on things such as class size, to limit the number of students in the class. We, and to be quite honest with you, we have some veteran teachers in that program who have really taken special time, care, and consideration to learn about quality online instruction. And personally, I think it is something that, I don't think it will ever replace the public, public school building, but I think it's an option that families are looking at. And when you look at the number who choose cyber charter schools, and we've had e-academy for a long time, and a lot of people continue to choose the online, online cyber program, and so if this district wants to remain competitive, it needs to provide that option for families. And so, obviously, we're, we're in a COVID year, and at some level, there's a greater impetus to make sure that this is up and running. But this isn't something that we've been talking about for, for one year, 18 months, 24 months. It is something that has been on, on the mind of this board since I arrived here nine years ago. And, and so, in this situation, we're, we're using it as an opportunity to begin something, something new. When you look at the resources that are shared, when you look at the number of students choosing that option, Franklin Regional would have to hire six, six teachers to run that program. The numbers wouldn't support it if we're on our own. But when you begin to combine with the other three districts, then you start getting class sizes that are appropriate, that are also cost efficient. And so, really, we talk a lot about partnering, sharing services, reducing costs while still providing high quality. From this standpoint, it's a program that I would support, and it's a program that I would send my own kids to.
Thank you. I wanted to hear that kind of a discussion. Appreciate it very much.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the Westmoreland Online Academy? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Dr. Pirino, you're back up with Waterfront Learning?
So, on your agenda is waterfront learning. It is listed at $60,000. That, that is actually a correction due to some contract, contract clarification. That dollar amount should be $30,000. It is Pearson, it is a Pearson curriculum that is aligned to standards, that is very robust, offered through waterfront learning, which is a product of the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. And so, so the recommendation is that we amend that agenda item to read $30,000, but I recommend approval.
Need a motion for Waterfront Learning?
So moved, Nevin.
Move Nevin, second?
Second, Scott Wyman.
Wyman. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Okay, Dr. Pines, Art Look, that's the BPA.
Yes, this is an agreement with the Arts Collaborative for the creative and performing arts classes we're going to have in the elementary school. And I'm going to ask Gendefolio, if she would mind, speaking about this in a little bit more detail.
Good evening, everyone. We worked with the Arts Collaborative for the past year to two years, developing and writing our creative arts curriculum. We worked with teachers from across the K to 12, our teacher leaders in visual, performing arts, and music to write that curriculum. Now, we have two teachers who have been assigned to the creative arts courses, one in the K to 2, one in the 3 to 5. So, when you write the curriculum, you have the scope and sequence really detailed and developed, and then you need to lesson plan, unit plan, and look at resources that you might need for that, the course throughout the school year. So, the Arts Collaborative is going to start working with the two teachers to develop that programming to its final completion, so that we have those courses fully built by the end of the school year. So, we have, we are hoping to have your approval for three and a half days, and we will spread that out over each of the nine weeks, so that our teachers can work with the Arts Collaborative to complete this. There's another document for your approval as well. This, so what I just talked about has a price to it. And then, the other document is called Art Look, Southwestern PA, and that is a free program that we would like to be a part of. It really is a way of connecting school districts with all of the arts organizations in Southwestern PA. I was in a meeting a few days ago, and there were just such a variety of different organizations all throughout the region who want to partner with school districts. We were talking about ways of getting students involved in internships, and lots of collaboration. There are communications that go out to the region that explain that our school district would be one of the, I think there were about 20 last year, and we hope to increase that, but it would be one of the, we would be one of the school districts who would be connected in this resource. We would be listed as kind of somewhere to come and look and see what we do in our performing arts, and our creative arts, our visual arts, our music programming, and ways that we could partner with other organizations in the community. So, that approval is, it is a free program, but it's just more for that communication to go out to the region to connect us.
You want to have any questions? Okay.
I have one. So, Jen, this, it said this already started. Did we send people to the meetings that were August 10th and August 13th?
No, I went to, that was just a virtual session for me to learn about it. I attended that.
Okay, so then, will we be sending people to the next series of?
Yeah, so the kickoff would be towards the end of September, which is really nice of them to let us get our school year started before they, they start kicking that off. So, we can get all of the, the arts teachers in the district involved in that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, need a motion to approve?
So moved, Scheider. Second.
Second, Moderator. Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Mr. Matzie, you're up for repair of damage from water main break.
Hello, everybody. This is at the intermediate school. Before I started here, I know there was three water main breaks up there. This is to repair the damaged sidewalk that was undermined in landscaping, and to take care of the rest of the dollar amount from our deductible.
Could I, could I get a little better explanation of what's going on here? I mean, you said it was water damage, is that correct?
There were three main water breaks on the road.
Okay.
That came down and washed
Okay.
the dirt from underneath the sidewalks and the landscaping.
So, why wouldn't, why wouldn't, I mean, whose sidewalk was it at the time this happened? Was it our sidewalk or the contractor's sidewalk?
It's a part of the project. It's under the, they submitted it under the builder's risk insurance, but there is a deductible. So, we did, the file was claimed, or was issued. We had an adjuster come to look at the site, look at the work, and a proposal was provided. They agreed with the work associated to the repair. However, they only cover the balance past the deductible.
And the deductible is?
Twenty-five thousand dollars. That's what the, that's what the current amount.
That's, that's our Franklin Regional School District deductible?
It's for the builder's risk associated to the project. There's an insurance policy that was established for the both projects, but the deductible for that insurance policy is 25,000.
To Mr. Yan's question, who owns that deductible?
Yeah.
The district or the?
So, we, the insurance policy is under the, is through the district.
Okay. It's our expense, the $25,000 deductible.
We thought we should, we thought we could handle it through the water authorities if it was there, but that's our understanding that the, the public.
Say, I'm sorry, say that again, Nancy. You say the water authority has no, no responsibility here?
It's our understanding from the water authority, the water to any money that's happening to your own personal property.
I, I would suggest that's an incorrect assumption, because I know personally of situations where individual homes have been flooded and the water authority paid for.
I'd like to stop discussion, because I think there could be some potential litigation. If we're going to approve this this evening, I would ask to be approved pending my final review, to see if they're accurate. I didn't get to look at this, so I would like to look at this to make sure it's accurate before we agree. I don't want to delay the process, so we can approve it pending my final review to see if, if I'm in agreement with the municipal authority's action.
I guess I have one more question. The deductible is 25,000, but it says that the dollar amount of this item is 54,629. Where does the difference come from?
Insurance policy pays.
So, the district's already received?
So, if we voted to approve this, we're voting to spend $25,000 of school district money. Okay.
And I'd like to amend that pending
Pending your?
My approvals.
I understand that.
Okay.
Can I ask why, if this happened in April, why we're just learning about it now in August?
So, there was some time
It was 54,000. I'm sorry, I thought that was a dollar sign.
It was time associated to, we thought that it would go through the water authority. We thought that it would be there, that they would reimburse the district. We were then notified that they would not. At that point in time, we already had a proposal. So, at that time, I contacted John Perry and the builder's risk agent, and the insurance adjuster came, and they had to review what the work was. They received the proposal, so we made a repair, and then the claim had to be finalized. Then, the district received that claim information, and then we were asked to go ahead and provide the direction to advance, to do this work based on an approval.
He says you're not getting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. So...
I understand what, all of those things that you said, I understood.
Okay.
But we were never informed in April that there was damage from a water main break.
We were in contact with the district about, associated to the water main break. As we were, as I said, we contacted John Perry when we were told that it would be, should be dealt with under builder's risk. I can't speak to, obviously, as far as speaking to the board. I do that based on what I've been told to do. This was brought to the attention, and the deductible was asked to be put on the agenda through the district. I don't believe this is going through as a change order directly on the contract. It was my understanding that this is something that we paid directly to advance, to do the work.
I don't, I don't want to belabor the issue, I'm listening to the solicitor, but I'm troubled, because what you've said to me basically is that this happened, you went to the water authority and said, what's your share of this, and they said nothing, and you said, okay. And I don't like that. I think we should have gone a hell of a lot further than, we don't take any responsibility here, I'm sorry. I think we should have had a professional opinion about that before we got this far.
Understood.
Excuse me, if I, if I may, Mr. Yan. Not to say that Mr. Mattis shouldn't review this as well, but it did go a little bit further. Through the insurance policy, they engaged the subrogation department. They reached out to the water authority, and it was their conclusion that we would not be able to receive any additional funds from the water authority, because they are protected by the municipal tort limitations for public entities. Now, whether or not Mr. Mattis has a different opinion or not, we can certainly review that, and we'll share the information with him, but it wasn't as simple as but it wasn't as simple as go consult from the municipal authority.
Are they a public utility?
I believe they are. No?
They are not?
They don't have to act under the PUC, and most likely, that's going to be accurate. There are some varying opportunities that we may... That I may differ with their opinion. But I'd just like to look at the documents and make a decision. That's why I'm saying, either way, we need to move it forward. I would like to just approve it this evening pending my review. And then if I think that we're at a different spot, I'll contact the municipal authority.
Will you provide us with a copy of your review?
I will.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Well, I guess I would like to do as Mr. Mattis suggested...
Let me start again. I'd like to do as Mr. Mattis suggested and amend the wording of this item to add in pending legal review by the solicitor.
It's going to be added in.
Yeah, I'll second it.
It's going to be added in.
We needed a motion and a second. I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion made.
And we need to then vote on the changing the wording, I believe, before we vote on the item?
We could just add it at this point. There was not a motion prior. It was just on the agenda, so the motion is approved.
With the wording modification. Okay. Thanks, Gary. So are we ready to make a motion?
We are ready to make a motion for repair, the damage from the water main breaks with Solicitor Mattis' review of the documents.
I move that we approve this item, including the amended wording for review by solicitor. Can I second?
Move, Scheider, second by Nevin. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0.
I had one more question before we adjourn.
Yep.
I was wondering if Dr. Pines could go over the exception that the Department of Health made for students who are wearing masks with regard to quarantining.
Yes. Normally, there is a six-foot rule for determining a close contact. The CDC guidance adds the following exception to the definition of close contact. In a K to 12 indoor classroom setting, the close contact definition excludes students or who were within three to six feet of an infected student if both the infected student and the exposed students correctly and consistently wore well-fitting masks the entire time. So essentially, that gives us some leeway in classrooms. We are planning to try to distance kids as much as possible as part of a mitigation measure. But if students are wearing masks, they can be as close as three feet. And if one of them tests positive, as long as they're both wearing masks, the other one would not need to quarantine. And that's a really significant change to what we had last year. Anything else, Mrs. Woolley?
Well, just to clarify. So you're saying that students who come to school wearing masks are less likely to be quarantined than students who come to school not wearing masks?
Correct.
Thank you.
It says that both parties need to wear masks.
Yes.
That is correct.
Yes.
So the mask...
Correct.
Correct. That's correct. Okay, any other comments?
Maybe afterward?
Okay, I just thought maybe everybody would...
Not on the agenda.
I can't hear you.
Because that's the case. If a classroom has kids that are wearing masks, will those families still be notified that there was a potential close contact? Or will those people that are wearing masks not be told that there was a close contact? Are they going to be alive at the classroom? Or will only the kids that weren't masked be told that there was a close contact?
Only those individuals who are actual close contacts will be contacted to say that there was an exposure.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
I need a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Move. Move seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.